The following program is not a New Channels production and New Channels has no responsibility for the content or opinions expressed therein.
To the citizens of the city of Fulton, I've been videotaping meetings since January of 1992. My only motive is a firm belief in informed electric will make an informed decision at election time that will ultimately benefit us all. If you share my belief and would like to donate blank videotapes to help with expenses, please call me at 598-5120. Thank you, my name is Terry Reynolds. Videotapes of all City of Fulton Common Council meetings are available to rent free of charge to the public at Video World. Thank you.
Welcome to the 1994 Fulton River Fest.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with all the liberty of the world.
John Crook, I understand, may be a little late, so we'll go ahead with a pre-meeting anyway, and hopefully he'll be here before the regular meeting opens up. On item one in the agenda, is there somebody here that can speak as to that informational presentation of the municipal insurance reciprocal? I wasn't sure whether my secretary got in touch with him or not, so I left it on the agenda. Apparently there isn't, so we'll have to skip that. None of us really have that much information about it to be able to talk with authority. Put it on the next meeting agenda, please, Mary, and I'll contact the gentleman who wrote to me. Two, Mary, you have something on that?
There has to be more information collected on this property before we can have the public auction. We didn't have quite enough detailed information, so they're going to have to not have the public auction and authorize the city clerk to re-advertise at a future meeting when we have everything we need.
Thank you. Three, we are familiar with that public hearing on the proposed local law to create position of city administrator. Four is...
Bond anticipation note.
Oh, yeah. Bond anticipation note for the purchase of the building and parking lot on West Broadway. I think everybody's familiar with that. Five is a routine advertisement by the clerk of polling places for the '93 general election. Six is routine bills over $1,000. Seven is to amend vehicle and traffic ordinance. Well, generally, can you tell us generally what it is, Mary, without having to go through every item?
Yeah, it's on West First Street, on the east side of West First Street, from Cedar Street to Curtis. It involves Cedar Street, walnut, chestnut, oak, pine, so it's right down, I think, West First Street on the east side. Parking prohibited at all times.
Okay.
Which I think it's prohibited anyway. I don't think there is much parking. The east side of West First Street. There's also installing a yield sign on Sylvan Street at the intersection of Meadowbrook Circle. On Sylvan Street.
Is that the one coming in?
Mm-hmm. Going south. I don't think so. It says, "Yield Sign." Install a yield sign.
I guess there's also a yield sign that's going to be erected at Sylvan Street?
Mm-hmm.
The entrance to Meadowbrook.
I believe that's... So that people don't park in front of the driveways on the east side of the street, but, you know, he didn't tell me anything.
Do you want to hold it for the next meeting?
I'd really like to double check before...
All right. We're done.
I just want to make sure that that's, you know, to cover where the driveways are and not...
Okay, we'll go ahead with the yield sign and hold the rest of the next meeting. Sure. I wasn't familiar with it either. Next item is a letter of disclosure, which speaks for itself when it's read by the clerk. Nine is the purchase of sand for ice control, the bid awards that we do every year at this time. Ten is installing a street light. Burley Terrace of NYMO is asking for permission to install a street light. Does anybody have any problem with that? Everybody familiar with that? Installing a street light in Burley Terrace? Okay, under discussion, teen activities. Dave Tietro, is Dave here?
He said he'd be here around 8:00.
Oh, all right. He wants to address the council on that item. Second is the Fair Housing Equal Opportunity Act, which we've been advised by the director of CDA that... What was it? FHA or who was it?
HUD.
Yeah. HUD is insisting that we pass one, even though it's pretty much recites the federal law anyway, that, of course, everybody has to observe whether we have a fair housing act or not, but they are insisting that we have to do that, otherwise there are going to be grants and funds that we won't be eligible for, so...
Should we have a public hearing on that?
I think it might be a local law.
I think it... Yeah, I think it is too.
Are we under a time limit?
No, as long as we're doing some action on it, we'll just have it down for discussion and see if anybody has anything, comments on it, and then we'll put it down for a public hearing. School benefit, FHA, how, executive... What's that?
It's John Lavoti.
Oh, yeah. Okay. John Lavoti, did... Everybody read the letter from John? Know what it is? He is asking for permission to attend a school that he feels would be very beneficial, and it looks that way to me. Certified financial planning curriculum, which sounds very impressive. The housing authority has already authorized it. Apparently the council has to do it also in order to, for him to attend. So, it looks like something that could be very beneficial. Next item is wildlife control. There's a gentleman who traps animals and relocates them. He wants permission to relocate them on Great Bear. And frankly, I have the vaguest idea whether that's good, bad, or indifferent, so something we'll discuss.
What kind of animals do we know?
The new south animals. Snocks, woodchucks. He's one of our trappers. That comes in and takes them out of the city.
Oh, he takes them out of the city? I didn't know that.
Yeah, he traps for the city and he has to bring them out in the country.
Oh, okay. Well, I'd rather see him in Great Bear than in the city.
We're not talking about large animals, son.
No. No bears around here. They're all up in Old Forge.
We assume any liability?
Pardon me?
Are we assuming any liability if we do that? Say if one was rabid and we didn't know?
Yeah, I thought of that, Jim, but then I also thought, how are you going to identify the animal as the same one that he put in there?
Unless we tag him when we...
I don't think he tags him. Besides, I think if he... I think if the animal was rabid, I doubt like very much if he would turn it loose. At least I hope not. Well, it's an interesting question, because if he traps them here in the city, where's he going to put them? You know, can't very well put them on somebody else's property, I wouldn't think. Well, we can talk about it. And that's all I have on discussions. Anybody have anything else they want to...
I would like to approach the council again.
Well, this is only preliminary.
This is not preliminary, Mr. Scott.
Yeah.
It's not, we're not in open...
Just not in a regular session. No, it's not a regular session yet. Anybody else want anything that they want to review before we start the meeting?
Can I get something on the agenda that we can discuss?
Okay, what is it?
The last meeting between Regal and Johnson, our property, they rescinded. Took a special use, we ran away from them. I've been fighting this for many months. It's gone into a court battle. I spent quite a lot of money on this. I'd like to discuss it with the common council, because this has been passed, and rescinded three times, twice, twice, Regal, twice.
Well, it's been rescinded. Well, I mean, I don't understand what there would be left to discuss. We can't take any further action.
I want to know how the common council can pass a law and rescind it so many times in such a short period of time, when I come...
You want us to put it back in?
You do what you want. I'd just like to address the council. If you want to...
All right. Okay.
I just want to have my say about it.
Okay.
I mean, you gentlemen cost me a lot of money. Did it feel legal?
Well, at least they had the gumption to do something about it. Instead of waiting for the court to do it.
Well, you should have did it back when I started this, sir.
Should have, could have, would have.
And that's the problem with this recession we got right now.
Not sure how that enters into it, but maybe there is a corollary there somewhere. Okay, we'll bring it up. You're welcome. It's going to be the fastest preliminary discussion we've ever had. Yeah, probably. Okay. Steve, you're going to be the only one here tonight?
Neil beat you so much.
Neil, we're on? Okay. Ah, dear. Did John have any idea what time he would get here, Jim?
Not exactly. He just said he'd try to be here by 7:30.
Just hoping he could be here for the public hearing.
Have you not? I could go with some of the other items first.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Maybe it'd be better if he's not here by the time we get to that item, skip it, go to the others, and then wait until he gets here. Do... Does anyone who is here for the public hearing on the city administrator have any objections if we skip that and go to others in the event that Mr. Crook is not here at that time? Okay, we'll follow that procedure then.
John, put your hand on this for a minute.
Hey, didn't... Didn't Gillen say that he would be moving those poles at the end?
Yeah, I got a note that falls at the west side of the park.
Didn't he verbally tell us if we signed Milwaukee that pursued an offer that he would go to the expense of me?
Well, he did take down one pole, so people could get in and out of there, but there's no poles.
It seems that I remember it, it did. Because John sent Bucky a letter to go over and look at it, then Bucky come to me, and I told Bucky that I thought it was Merle's.
Talking about the Gillen property? Yeah. Bucky and I wrote over there, and we thought it'd be a good idea to talk to the traffic department about whether we should or should not take those poles down, because the way it is right now, you can use one for ingress and one for egress, and maybe eliminate a lot of confusion if you get four or five cars all trying to go out at the same time.
I've driven by them.
Well, has Joe checked it out yet?
Hi, hello?
Yeah.
Not that I know of. Might want to ask him, or Jimmy, or somebody to ask him, and, you know, to get his opinion on it, too. Kind of like what they did at Bullhead Point. Instead of having the whole thing wide open, cars coming and going any place in between, they have one, or actually two sets of driveways, places to get in and out.
Yeah, then at least it has some order to it.
And, you know, maybe they could even put up signs, "In only, out only," that kind of stuff.
What about our most most liability, though, for the city?
Might not be as much of a liability as if everybody's trying to go out at the same time.
Yeah, yeah, fair. Like that.
Besides, John, if they can't see those poles, they really have no business driving.
Come to think of it, I think I've known a few that couldn't see those poles.
Couple of your friends come in on the left, so...
No, a couple of people that I saw come in front of me when I was judge. More than a couple, matter of fact. Did you read about the guy that they arrested after a long visit? They tested his test was over 35? At 4:00, you're supposed to get dead.
Oh, no, he wasn't really, honestly, just, no. But the problem was, you know, he wanted to know when they went over and did the inspection. I can call you, Billy? Oh, my God, that we can vote on the bond anticipation note.
Getting a little high.
Two is off, we got to be...
He was a local mayor.
Very arrogant fellow.
Oh, my God. What times everybody got? Okay, going to open the meeting, I think the clock's a little off. I've got 7:31, several others have the same, and 7:30, so I guess it's time. The Common Council meeting for 10:593 is open. Want to call the roll, please, Mary?
First ward.
Here.
Second ward.
Here.
Third ward.
Here.
Fourth ward.
Here.
Fifth ward.
Here.
Sixth ward.
Mayor's here. Item one, please. Oh, yeah, that's the one, there was nobody here to brief us on, so we'll have to hold that for the next meeting. Two has been postponed. Item three is a public hearing on the proposed local law to create the position of city administrator. Public hearing is now open.
Excuse me, I am here to review on item one.
Pardon me, on what?
I said I am here to review on item one.
Oh, great, okay. You want to come up, please?
I don't know how your format works here, that's what I'm...
Well, no, you just speak right into the mic and give us your name, please, and your
title, background, or whatever it is, please. I'm Bob Wallace. I'm here representing Eastern Shore Associates, but also representing the New York Municipal Insurance Reciprocal and Right Risk Management, which is the management firm that the reciprocal has chosen to manage the reciprocal itself.
Bob, excuse me, can you speak into the mic, because people behind you have a difficult time hearing if you don't.
Okay, is that better? No, it sounds better.
I hear you fine, I don't know.
Okay.
Can you hear them back there?
Okay. What I'd like to do tonight, and I appreciate first being able to come here tonight to speak to the council, is to introduce you to a new concept for the managing of the insurance, which typically has been done by insurance, for property and casualty, which is property and liability automobile coverage for the municipalities of the state of New York. And what I wanted to do is just briefly explain what a reciprocal is. You've been getting a lot of information recently in the mail from all the associations. It's also been pressed since the reciprocal was formed. So what I'd like to do is briefly tell you what it is. The New York State Insurance Department, on September 1st of this year, licensed as a company licensed to do business in the state of New York, a New York municipal reciprocal known as NYMER, is the name they're going by. And what NYMER is, is a... The reciprocal itself, what the reciprocal is, is basically self-insurance for public candidates in the state of New York. And basically municipalities, all municipalities in the state of New York are eligible to apply to the reciprocal to see if they can acquire coverage through the reciprocal. The reciprocal, the only limitation on it is on population size, which is, it's excluding all municipalities with a population of 400,000 people or more. And so that takes in most of the municipalities in New York State. Again, what it is, it's a form of self-insurance, but it's more than just self-insurance. It's all the municipalities insuring one another for the purpose of providing liability and property coverage for the municipalities. The law required that there be at least 25 municipalities to form the reciprocal presently. Even though it was formed September 1st, there are 30 municipalities that have entered the reciprocal as of the 1st of September. We expect that the number to grow to probably more than 100 by January 1st, and in other states where the reciprocals have come in, five years down the road, in most states, 80 to 90 percent of all the municipalities in the state have entered the reciprocal. The reason they've done that is because there's a lot of benefits to the municipalities themselves that are involved with the reciprocal. Mainly, those benefits are is the fact that the insurance itself and the people that run the insurance company is handled by the participants themselves, which we call subscribers. The subscribers form, and I believe you all got a brochure that we handed out ahead of time, the subscribers themselves form up the board of governors that run the insurance company. And so they actually control the funds, control what's going to happen within the insurance company itself. What the reason, main reason for forming it was the cyclical cycles of municipal insurance and commercial insurance, where some years, there's, everybody's knocking down your door trying to sell you insurance, and other years, nobody wants to sell you insurance. And in 1986, there was an insurance crisis that Fulton felt very heavily, as did many municipalities in New York State, and that's when the legislation was done. But due to the complexity of actually getting this put together, it took several years of research, several years of working with the insurance department and with many other financial institutions to actually bring this to bear. The municipal reciprocal is not the new first reciprocal in New York State. The first one that actually was formed after the legislation was the school reciprocal, which many of you have probably read in the paper, recently the Fulton School District went into that reciprocal. It's the same risk management firm that is handling the municipal one that does the school one, even though they are both separate reciprocals. Some of the advantages, basically, it's taking your own control of your own insurance into your hands and taking it out of the hands of the insurance companies, the essential reasons behind the reciprocal. It basically gives you stability in the marketplace. It also gives you a means to develop broader coverages than are available through the standard markets, simply because reciprocal is owned by the municipalities themselves. And what they are going to do is they're going to develop forms and broaden the forms that are going to be common for losses and exposures, for common to municipalities, not necessarily common to all other industries. And we feel with our research that we've done into this, that the municipal market itself, even though it's had reputations of being poor risks because of all the exposures, the insurance companies traditionally have, at least in upstate New York and the municipalities that we've insured, have had a very good track record. Presently, our agency represents approximately 60... Uh, presently, our agency represents approximately sixty percent of all the municipalities in Oswego County, uh, through standard markets. Uh, this is why we originally got involved with the reciprocal, to find out as much as we could possibly find out about it. And, uh, we, uh, have now been convinced after several meetings with not only the, uh, the risk managers in this, but also the reinsurance carriers that are going to be, uh, involved in this endeavor. And in speaking with the New York State Conference of Mayors, Association of Counties, and Association of Towns, and speaking with their councils, that this is a viable alternative for many municipalities in New York State. Uh, to determine whether or not it's actually going to be a, um, a good recourse and a good avenue for the city of Fulton, uh, it's too early to tell. What I wanted to do is, though, introduce it to you and suggest that perhaps it is an avenue you should look into. Uh, if you choose to, basically, uh, we are the upstate representative, or the representative for Oswego County for Right Risk Management. Uh, we would be able to put together a proposal and bring it to, uh, whoever the council deemed, either a committee or the council itself, a detailed proposal of what the cost would be of the reciprocal and the actual, uh, workings of the reciprocal itself. Thank you.
What was, what the, been the experience, uh, so far of, uh, these organizations as far as any savings is concerned?
Okay, again, it's very early, there's only thirty that have come in so far. We're starting to price them up against other Oswego County entities that we have. Uh, so far, we have found that in many cases, the, uh, cost savings going in, uh, has been, uh, anywhere from ten to thirty percent for the municipalities coming in. However, I would really like to stress that a decision to go to the reciprocal should not be made on dollars alone. There's many, many advantages of going into the reciprocal outside of the dollars themselves. But cost-wise, coming in, uh, up to this point, we have seen, uh, again, savings of ten to thirty percent. In fact, one I did today for a local township that we just compared, actually, the savings were about forty-five percent on that one.
How's the municipality, though, uh, budget for it? Isn't there, uh, some uncertainty as to the losses?
Okay, you, you budget for it exactly the same way you do for your regular insurance. We will actually give you a cost with coverage breakdown, we're using standard insurance forms. The main difference is, is the owner of the insurance company. The difference is, is the subscribers themselves own the insurance companies, as opposed to stockholders or policyholders of other situations. So we'll actually figure out dollar amounts for the municipality, what the cost is, you'll know upfront exactly what your costs are going to be.
Who's the chairman of the insurance committee?
Myself.
Jim, do you want to talk to him?
Well, we will as a committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I mean. Do you want to get in touch with him, or?
You got a card, or?
Yeah, actually, in the packet that hand, that we handed out here, there's, uh, there should be a letter with a brochure from it, but if not, I'll make sure to get one to you.
Oh, yeah, there is, okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Item three, the public hearing on the, uh, proposed position of city administrator is now open. Uh, yeah. I want to limit the, uh, talks, now, we've been through this twice before. It's been hashed and rehashed, I don't see any reason why anybody has to take more than two minutes to present their views, unless there is some strong reason otherwise. No rebuttal, again, unless there is some compelling reason for rebuttal. And I'll start left to right, first row, second row, and so on, until everybody's had an opportunity. Don?
Mayor, members of the council, my name is Don Bullard, and I'm only here to again urge you to adopt this resolution, uh, creating the city manager former government. Forgive me, I have a cold. The city charter dates back to nineteen oh-two, and if one reviews the city charter, you'll find references to horse-drawn wagons and other things that are a bit archaic. The ci- the charter was drawn at the beginning of the nineteen hundreds, and I believe that if this city is to move forward into the years two thousand, we need to amend the charter to reflect the city manager in our, in our city. The city can, in my mind, and in my opinion, save the entire cost of the salary in cost savings, economies, and efficiencies. Uh, currently, they're spending the money in the city, and I think it can be spent more effectively to, to pay that person's salary, number one. Number two, the mayor and aldermen have to stop micromanaging the departments in this city and allowing a full-time administrator to manage those departments. Number three, no other business or industry that I know of has a nine and a half or ten million dollar a year department without someone at its helm. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Vern?
Uh, your honor, counsel, I, I'm Vern Drone from Fulton. I, too, would like to, uh, echo, uh, Don Bullard's, uh, thoughts. It's no secret that, uh, I have been a member of the mayor's commission, and I see that we have three or four of the, uh, former mayors here tonight that frankly have put this package together. We think that this is something good for Fulton. We have agonized over a lot of provisions that are in this proposal. Uh, this is something that is a collective bipartisan, bipartisan agreement that we all came together with. And let me tell you, on some of these issues, on some of the provisions, uh, we had long and hard talks about these and came to this agreement. I think this is an historic moment, uh, in the city of Fulton's history. And, uh, it should be acted upon and acted upon with haste. Uh, we have been over this, uh, council members have sat in on many of the meetings, including you, mayor. And, um, I thought back at the end of July that we had formalized, uh, this particular agreement for the position of city administrator. And I would urge the council to act upon this and act very favorably. And I thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
My name's Phil Blair. We all know Rice Day, and I'm against a city administrator. I have asked this council to look at the possibilities of a three-year full-time mayor. I just want to reiterate my stand, I am against a full-time administrator under the conditions set forth in the last, uh, job description I read. Thank you.
Thank you. Dinah?
Dinah Kolya, I agree, we do need an administrator. I do have one question.
Yes.
If you have an administrator, and you have an employee who is having a problem, does he go to his boss, or does he go to the administrator?
Under this proposed local law that's before us, he would have to go to his boss.
He would have to go to his boss?
Yes.
If that can't be rectified, there's nothing to administer?
I tried that, and it did not, uh, fly.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone in the council? Anyone wish to make, oh, yes.
My name is Marjorie Walsh, I'm not a politician, I'm not a former mayor, but I've never worked in a company or an office that if you had a problem between you and your supervisor, that you couldn't go to somebody above them and straighten it out. Just doesn't seem to me that an employee has to answer just to his supervisor. If there's a conflict of interest, conflict of personality, you should be able to go to somebody else to straighten it out.
I agree. Al?
My name is Al Scuterie, fourth ward. I'm just going over that proposal. And, uh, I'd like to give my view of it, whether, whether or not it'll change anything, I'm not sure. But you six men are up there to represent the city of Fulton, and you're our voice in government. And I am believing, and I'm, I've, I've gone over the tapes from the three mayors twice, and I'm thinking maybe I've missed something. And I'm, sit down again tonight, and I'll look at it again. But I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, but I think it's saying that the mayor is in direct control of this administrator, and he answers only to the mayor.
That's right.
I think it's wrong. For one reason, we have a mayor and a city attorney that leave office every two years. I don't want a mayor, city attorney, and a city administrator leaving office every two years.
Oh, that's what this says.
I want continuity, I want consistency. I want a man that's going to sign on for a contract of, say, five years, and if he doesn't tell her to do his job, fire him, keep him away from civil service. If he does his job, give him another contract. But I don't want him answering as a puppet or a deputy mayor to a mayor. I want a man that's not going to be responsible to the mayor or the mayor's party, but to the people of Fulton. And what I want to say in government, I want to go to my counselors, and I want them to speak for me. And I want them to have control over not only the mayor, but the man that he is hiring and working under or over. I think it should be an inverted pyramid. Six councilmen at the top, mayor, city administrator, and then a reversed pyramid. Department heads, employees.
I agree with you all, but that was a proposal I made, and I'm shot down.
Well, this is my, this is my opinion, like I said, it's probably late.
Yeah.
But in the past, the mayor has been a ribbon cutter. This mayor doesn't cut ribbons, obviously, he's busy in his mayor's office, and he doesn't have the time. But every time I open a paper, that's what I see, businesses opening, Chamber of Commerce, mayor's cutting ribbons. So what good is this man going to do in office? So I want someone that's going to be there consistently, that can tell the new mayor and some of the new councilmen what is expected of them.
It's going to be the mayor's boy, and the mayor says, "Jump," is he going to say, "Oh, hi."
If the mayor, if the Republicans are in, in office, we're going to have a Republican administrator, and the Democrats have a Democratic administrator, that's a bunch of baloney. That man is not supposed to be working for the party, he's supposed to be working for the people of Fulton. I think it's a serious mistake. Thank you.
Just, just a couple of things. I think that if an appointed administrator is doing a good job, there's nothing in this proposal to say that the next mayor cannot appoint him.
Except it may be a different party.
Well, it could be, but it has to be done with, with the approval of the council. I think that's where the control is. If a mayor coming in is new, and he has a re-elected council who feels comfortable with an administrator that's doing, doing the job, then maybe they would not approve, uh,
John, you better, you better read that again. Mayor has the power under this proposal to fire.
With the approval of the council.
No, no, no.
No.
That's what was, that was the difference between my proposal and this one. John, you better read it again.
We have a puppeteer and a puppet. John, let me ask you something. John?
Kind of lucky.
Have you learned your, your, your job in the last two years? Does it take more than two years to learn your job?
I think the first year.
I think it's the same with the mayor's office, it takes more than two years to learn your job. An administrator can't learn his job in two years.
John, let me read section six to you.
Okay.
The administrator shall be appointed by the mayor with the approval of the council and shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor during the mayor's term of office.
Okay.
What does that mean to you?
It says if the council disapproves him, that he's not in there.
What?
No, it doesn't say that. With the approval of the council.
Appointed with the approval of the council, but serves at the pleasure of the mayor.
Okay, but what, what if the council does not approve your pick?
Well, then, he won't be picked, but once he's, once he's picked, then the mayor has the right to can him at any time.
Yeah, and the council has no say over that. So if the guy's doing a good job? If the guy's doing a good job, he will stay in there.
If the mayor wants him, if the mayor doesn't want him, he's out.
John?
Well, that makes sense to me, I mean, how many?
You can't be naive about politics. You can't believe that a Democratic party taking over from a Republican party is going to keep that Democratic, that Republican administrator.
Let's take an instance this council. We couldn't even decide upon police dogs. Or a police chief. How, now, can you imagine if George proposed a, an administrator, and he has a Republican council? And we didn't like him? You think he would have gotten him? Don't be naive about politics.
Still begging the question, though, John. Point still is, the mayor under this proposal has the right to discharge the administrator at any time.
To discharge.
So he'd be discharging somebody that he picked.
Pardon?
Are you done with me? I'm over two minutes, thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just see it that this is something that, in order for a person to get in there, he has to have the approval of the council.
No question about it. Percy?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Well, you know, I've spent fourteen years in office. But I would like to kind of go back a little bit. When we was working on this proposal, we spent a lot of time on it. And as people get up and they can make comments and so forth, but we forget one thing. The people that put this together, including you, George, spent twenty-seven years in this office. And I think that should mean something when it comes to bringing a proposal before the council. Now, the years in office, including George and myself, and Muriel, and Woodard, and, uh, Werner, it's got to mean something to this council, our recommendations. Now, I know, I mean, George has had a tough time in the office. I had a tough time, but I was lucky I had a partner in business. Uh, Werner, Don, and Muriel was more or less retired. You're just not going to find anybody to run for the office if you don't have someone that can back them up, and someone that can sit here day after day. It's an impossible job anymore. You'll admit that yourself, George.
Absolutely.
And I think everybody that's served as mayor here would admit the same thing. If you want good people running for this office, you're going to have to have either an administrator, an assistant to the mayor, or the man that runs, that runs the whole, the whole shebang, and that would be, as far as I'm personally concerned, that would be the man similar to the one that's in Watertown, New York. If the mayor is elected non-political, and the, the, uh, man that takes care of the, the office, as far as we're concerned here, would be the administrator. And he would be in charge year after year. But we've got to have somebody, you just can't bolt this thing down. You've got to have either an assistant, administrator, or a city manager type government, one or the other. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, yes, David. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, David, but this young lady in, in the, in the middle had her hand up right after Percy, if you, if you don't mind. Yeah.
Fred Foley, uh, with due respect to Mr. Patrick and the former mayors, I would like to give an opinion to this. I, I think we need an administrator, but I think the language needs to be adjusted to the term of the administrator. For one thing, how are you going to get anyone to take a job that will, you know, is not secure for two, more than two years? You know, someone who has all the qualifications that you asked for. And also, this, um, person, I think the employee should have access to this person, because sometimes when you go to a department head, you can't get the, the answer, or the, you know, the, um, results that you want. Therefore, you can go to this other person if you need to. Now, if you had, uh, Mr. Tito that was here only two years, you certainly wouldn't want to replace him after two years. So a, a, a job that entails so much work should be made permanent. I guess that's all I have to say, but I do say we do need a man, but the language, I think, has to be adjusted.
Thank you very much. David?
Uh, just to reiterate a little bit on what's been said by the mayors that are up here. I don't believe that there's any contest whatsoever that we need a city administrator of any of the people sitting on this council. I think the only contest we have going here, any consideration of a contest, is whether this person is going to be able to be hired and fired by a body rather than one person. I know that, I know that Muriel very graciously stood up here and gave her opinion the last time, that she certainly wouldn't want to work for somebody that came in on the wrong side of the bed, and you didn't like the way you looked this morning, you said, "You're out of here, you're gone," and I can understand that one hundred percent. Well, I don't know, as mayors are always Well, I don't know, as mayors are always even on even keel all the time, and they don't have feelings, and they don't get up on the wrong side of the bed themselves, and to put a perspective in light that, say, the mayor comes in, and this guy is irritating him for a week, he's made some decision the mayor doesn't want to go along with, and maybe the straw that breaks the camel's back is he doesn't feel good, and he's got a cold, and he comes in, and this person irritates him a little bit more, and he says, "You're gone." Now, what we've done is we've taken a lot, possibly a lot of expertise, and took a long time to find a person, all of his knowledge that he's done in the city workings, and it will be gone in a flash. What we're looking for is a way to save dollars and cents for the taxpayers here, some continuity with department heads so that there is a matter of record of where our expenditures are going. This would be an invaluable amount of information for any new mayor coming in. He doesn't have to come in, this man can lay it out and say, "Look, if this is what's happening," and I don't think that any of the mayors in the past have had that privilege. It's very, very difficult to put things together in the first few months in office, whether it be the mayor's job or the alderman's job, is spent finding out what's going on and knowing the ropes and learning who you contact to do what, what committees you do, what the committees are responsible for. This man, with the outlines of his job, would have those responsibilities, and yes, he's going to have to be, and to quote Muriel, some kind of a Superman, and yes, yes, he's going to be a professional. And I feel that if he's in here with the majority vote of the council and the mayor, that he then has a general consensus of a body, not a person, and he's going to be around a while if he's doing his job, he will not become a political pawn. And I'm afraid that if a mayor appoints with, even with the approval of the common council, but he can dismiss at any time, that that possibility lurks in the closets of what the operations of the city are. And I don't feel that it's in the best interest of doing that as far as taxpayers' dollars and getting the most out of the position for what it was intended for. I also think that employees should have another avenue to go to other than their immediate supervisor if they cannot solve a situation with the man that they're working for. And if we close that door, I don't think that's a fair labor practice to the people that are really working for us.
I have to agree with David. I think the continuity is very important. I know that when I came in and had to learn this job all over again, it meant a lot of time wasted and a lot of effort and a lot of experience that was wasted, too. Another thing that I don't think anyone would think of, a lot of the duties that the administrator would perform are presently really performed by the city clerk. He's the one that takes all the brunt of the new people that come into office to try to find out what's going on, and that's really not fair to him. I know that he and Mary Campbell carry far more of a load than they should have to, and that is part of the reason why. We don't have somebody in there who has continuity. Not only that, if you have a man that figures he's only going to be in there for a couple of years, it's not a very secure position, and yet you can't give him permanent tenure because then if he doesn't do a good job, you can't get rid of him. So I think that the continuity and the security that can be provided would be, in some measure at least, if he could only be discharged by the mayor and the common council instead of the mayor alone. Yes?
As far as the concerns about?
You want to come up front? Front, please.
As far as the concerns about the employees not having a place to go, every contract has a grievance procedure, and the mayor's not the last word, or the department head's not the last word. There's a grievance procedure in every contract in the city, so that shouldn't be a factor.
The only problem with a grievance procedure, though, is that sometimes it winds up in arbitration, which is very expensive for both sides. But he's correct about that, there is a grievance procedure. Yes?
My name is Joe Langley, and I just had one quick question. It seems to me that you've had former mayors talking about this. Have you talked to any of the department heads and gotten input from the workers in regards to this position? Has that been done? Because typically with a company, if you want to find out what's wrong with a company, you ask the workers, you don't ask management. Thank you.
Thank you. Good point. Yeah, anybody else?
Yes. I would like to ask both Vern and Don, are you satisfied with what's before us right now?
Yes.
In part?
It's on the premise that with my conversation with Werner, that
We've talked twice today.
Okay.
That's the same as what the original mayors put together. I did not see the whole proposal until just a moment ago, this lady was hanging up a little glance to it. But on Saturday, we'll ask, I'll stand up and speak, the checks and balances mayor and the council is that the council could stop funding if they were having the city manager. And I believe with all due respect, if the mayor then had the city manager, we both think he wouldn't stay around. So the council probably, in actuality, couldn't get rid of that city manager.
To answer Mr. Langley's questions, I did talk to the department heads, and they were in agreement that we did need someone here all day long that they could talk to. I think one of the problems we have here is that we're dealing with really an abstract concept. We've never had one, and we don't know what's going to happen. We have no frame of reference, and we're never going to know how it works unless we implement it. We know that it doesn't work without an administrator, and unless we try something, and we are going to be going through a transition with a new mayor, I think we owe it to both of those, or three of the men that are running for office, to give them the opportunity to start out on the right foot.
Anyone else? Yes.
On November the second, you will be electing a new mayor, and both candidates, so far, have announced their platforms. A administrator will help them translate their platforms into action, and that is why we, the former mayors, felt it was so important. As the chief executive officer, administrative officer of this city, the mayor who can call out the troops in times of emergency, and is the final word, and administration in this city should also have the authority to have the full power over his administrative assistant. And I hope that you will support what we have worked very hard with many arguments and many adjustments to put into paper form here, and I sincerely hope you will support it. Another thing the employees do, I don't know how active the union has been during your administration, but I was called on regularly by union leaders in this city over various improprieties or infractions or inconveniences that occurred in the city with the employees so that they're not without power themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I had two questions. Go ahead, go ahead.
Hi, Dick Allen. The question I have for the former mayors is why do you feel so strong that you should have the full power over the administrator? That is my question. You can't run the type of city that Fulton needs if you're going to have a person who is always constantly worried about who's in office. It should have nothing to do with that. It should be done strictly on his qualifications, how well the job is done. If nothing else need be, why don't you just take and put in there that the administrator cannot be dismissed without cause, and it has to be approved not only by the mayor but the council, both the same as it is for hiring this person? Because it's too important a job to just let it go because there's a conflict either due to politics or whatever. I've never had nothing to do with politics, and I don't think I ever could, because to me, politics, as far as Republican or Democrat or whatever it may be, that is not in the best interest of people. What's best for the people is what we're trying to resolve here, and that is to have a person who is going to be responsible for the City of Fulton and not to just the one person. Because ultimately, if the mayor can let the person go just because, whatever reason, without no provisions for saying, "Well, you're gone," that's not right. There has to be provisions in there for, if he's not doing a good job, yes, by all means, the mayor and the council should have the authority, the same as they did to hire him, to let him go, but not without that written in.